Good evening, welcome to the Manchester Community School Board meeting. If we would rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mr. Booker?
Here.
Mr. Fierstos?
Here.
Mr. Penron?
Here.
Mr. Brubaker?
Here.
Mr. Reimer?
Here.
Mr. Esposito?
Here.
Yeah, I'm here Randy. Full board tonight. Emergency additions, deletions?
None.
None. Hearing of patrons.
Good evening. For a third month now, I'm up here asking this board to take some public action and address the behavior of one of your board members. I'm sure you're getting tired of hearing from me, but to be fair, I'm getting tired of asking, so I guess we're kind of even. Being a school board member doesn't give you the right to say, do, and demand whatever you please. Mr. Reimer, thank you for speaking up last meeting and letting us know that you understand that fact. Mr. Fierstos, you weren't able to attend last month's meeting, so I'll give you the opportunity to let our community know where you stand on the behavior that you've been made aware of. Does it seem to you like the kind of thing that we should let continue without addressing?
Just no comment right now.
I guess that's our answer. See you guys next month.
Eighty-five, that's how many days this board has known about the actions of one of its members that affected my future employment. And yet you remain silent. This is now the third board meeting that has been brought up, and yet you remain silent. At this point, I've come to the conclusion that you're either holding out hope that it's just going to go away, or else you really don't care. So what would make you care enough to speak up? Take a minute and truly put yourself in my shoes. Where after 25 years of dedication, hard work, and sacrifice on behalf of our children, a board member feels the need to weigh in on your future employment. If you were in that situation, would you remain silent? If one of your children, a family member, or a friend had an employer do this exact same thing to you, would you be understanding of a board choosing to publicly ignore it? I'd like to think that you looked at it through these lenses, yet here we are eighty-five days later, and you remain silent. Maya Angelo is quoted as saying, "When someone shows you who they are, believe them the first time." So my questions for this board are this: Did this board member consult with any of you before representing the board as a reference for an employee of Manchester Community Schools? And two, did this board member inform you afterwards that he provided a reference for an employee of Manchester Community Schools? If the answer to these questions is no, then is this really a board, or is it just a group of individuals who act independently and serve their own personal interests, but then expect to be protected as a part of this board? The third question is, when you found out about what transpired, were you surprised to find out which board member acted in this way? And if the answer to that question is no, is it possible that this board member has continued to show you who they are, and it's time to start believing them? So over the past eighty-five days, what could have been done? Well, you could have contacted the other school board and shared the positive things that I did for this district to see if they would reconsider. You could have contacted me to let me know that you're sorry about what happened, but you've taken steps to make sure that it doesn't happen again.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. You could have centered the board meeting member to not allow him to serve in the leadership capacity or represent Manchester Community Schools on another board. You could have also publicly encouraged them to, the board member, to resign. But with the exception of the comments made by one board member at the last meeting, I'm not aware of any of these things happening. I know that I haven't heard from the board, certainly not an apology. They haven't said, "Hey, we've addressed the situation, it won't happen again." Nothing. And to add one detail about a member reaching out to meet with me, that happened twenty-six days after, in one board meeting after the incident took place. Actions... One more paragraph, and I can probably have someone give me some time of theirs if they... Okay. And to add one detail about the... It took twenty-six days. Being a school board member should not be looked at as a position of authority, it's a position of responsibility, and I ask that you don't forget that. You have a responsibility to this community to act in a way that represents them, you have a responsibility to protect the students who learn here and the staff who works here. And while you are not responsible for who gets elected, you are absolutely responsible for holding them accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whelan. Presentations. Mrs. Watkins?
Is there anybody else in here?
I don't see anyone.
I am so excited to be presenting this evening and talking about Manchester Elementary. I am the proud principal of Manchester Elementary. It's a privilege to serve. The motto here is to dream, grow, and achieve. And you notice I underline and bolded "grow." I'm often asked, "How do we grow our students? How do we know they're making educational gains? Do we just trust blindly in our schools?" I can tell you, no, it's not blind trust. Okay, Randy? There we go. On this next slide, you can see we have twenty-one outstanding staff members in our building. We have one amazing counselor, two special education teachers, four specials teachers, and a very dedicated EL director. All of them together make a difference. That's how we grow our students, by looking at our population. Well, there we go. This slide, this is data. I love data. It's something that I really get a charge out of. When I take a look at this, I challenged myself. I could look at the beginning of the year scores and just look at that view, but I really want to drill down. So I looked at the standard view, which challenges us. And you can see, the bottom line there is the standard view of how our students were growing at the beginning of the year. This is all of the students, all four hundred and forty-three students. In the middle of the year, look at that green line. And that double green line is well above grade level. And you can see, we still have some concerns on the red side. We're addressing that, and I'm going to tell you how in just a few minutes. Math is a little bit the same. We have some work to do in math, that's for sure, but we're growing and the kids are learning. One of the things we do is we look at our data, and we take a look at our dyslexia screener. We have a director of reading, literacy director, Beth Rosine, that I'll be talking about in a few moments, and she along with her amazing team screened kindergarten, first, second grade students to see, is there one other piece of data that we're missing? Is there something else that we need to be paying attention to? And you'll notice that we have some students that are flagged. What does that mean? Well, are they English language learners? Are they groups of students that go see our EL director, Chloe Selig? Are they students that already have an IEP? Are they being serviced by our special education program? Or are they general education students and we've missed something? What other pieces will fit together in this puzzle? Well, you know me and data. I look at more data. And we take a look at benchmarking. Again, benchmarking is done at the beginning of the year, and we can see our kids come in ready to learn, that's that top solid green. Our first grade students, we start to see some issues. Some kids can get reading boom like that, others cannot. We can't just keep teaching the same way. We have to change our instructional practices. So what do I look at? I know it's surprising. More data. Here's more data. I love this. Our director of reading took a look at the kids in third grade. Does it make a difference if they have Rebecca Reimer as a preschool teacher? A certified preschool teacher? It sure does. Take a look. The top green tower's there. If they had Manchester Elementary, they outscored their peers. If they had Manchester Elementary preschool, they're emerging more. And we have zero who had Manchester Elementary preschool that did not meet their benchmark. Well done, preschool. And it takes those certified teachers. I'm often asked, dual language immersion, how do we know it's working? Is it working? Is it not working? Well, I can tell you the kids really love it. And I can also tell you, when I took that snapshot at the beginning of the year, that is a snapshot of how those kids who have had it since kindergarten are performing. And the bottom two lines can show you, that's dual language, those bottom two bars. This chart over here, this is language proficiency. I'm often asked, "Well, can they speak in Spanish then? How does that work, Mrs. Watkins?" Well, in kindergarten, they pair it back and forth. In first grade, they're starting to put two words together and sentences together. They're starting to speak to their peers in those two words or short sentences. And we're seeing that these kids by second grade, and definitely if the program continues in third grade, they'll be able to do all of their presentations, their speaking, all of their writing in Spanish. I did take a look at comparing them. DLI compared to general education. And I can see that they're hanging right there with their peers. I was asked, "Why is there a zero there in the kindergarten line?" Well, because you can't be below grade level when that's your first grade that we're looking at. So we're doing quite well there. I took a look at... I'm not sure where I'm supposed to point. Oh, oop! That one. Taking a look at reading, and in reading, we're doing quite well there too. I did not compare dual language to reading because their instruction is in Spanish for math, and their instruction is in science, so that's why I didn't do the cross comparison. Now here's the cool part, the graph. Our multi-tiered systems of support, how do we respond when kids are not learning? At Manchester Elementary, you can see the bullet points there, it's the reading diagnostic, it's our benchmarks, it's our formative assessments, it's our scope and sequence, it's our curriculum, it's our connection with that, and the multi-tiered system of support. They used to call it RTI, but we have a new acronym, and you're going to learn more about acronyms here in a moment too. We take a look at our screening process, we take a look at our progress monitoring, we take a look at our multi-level prevention systems such as those pull-out groups, and we make decisions based on that data. What's our professional development like? What curriculum are we choosing? How are we sharpening our skills as educators? All of that goes together to grow a student. And I love this. I plucked that center out, that decision-making, and guess what I found? Educational gains. Intentional educational gains. How do I do that? Well, I don't do it alone. It's the team. It's the school. They do it. I sit back and celebrate and cheer them on. If you take a look, instructional strategies should be shared and celebrated during our PLC times. Thank you, board, for allowing us that delay schedule to give us time to do just that. And also, we make an action plan, so we can change what we're doing when it's not working. In business, I think there's a model that's called PDCA. I don't know, I'll have to ask the business people. But it's planning, doing, checking, and assessing. We do educational gains. How do we make the gains? We gather, we analyze, we intentionally act, we analyze it again, and then we notice and adjust. Notice and adjust. Notice and adjust. And then what do we do? Hit repeat. Systematically repeat and do it all over again. What makes MES special? Well, I'll tell you. It's we believe in that model of MTSS, we believe in the educational gains that we can make, we employ exemplary staff, top-notch. Because of you, our class sizes are manageable. We appreciate that. When you get class sizes that are edging on twenty-five, it's harder to make those educational gains. So we thank the board for recognizing that. We anticipate the student learning needs, and we create our daily schedules to have set aside time to address them. So many times you hear, "But we don't have time. I'm not sure where to fit it in our schedule." We have a blocked time to respond to this. And we never, ever limit our growth. We never say, "Hey, they're at grade level, we're done." We want to know what's next. How do we even push our top achievers? The next part is our student success team. That is me, our counselor, our literacy director, our EL director, our special education teacher, Wabash Miami Area Program School Psych comes, our speech pathologist, and our math interventionist. We all set aside time quarterly, four times a year, every grading period, we meet with our staff, every teacher, and they bring forward students that they might be concerned about, and we kind of have a think tank. What should we do? Is it our curriculum? Is it our instruction? Because it's not the kids. The kids will grow if we show them the way. And we start making a tier-two plan, we start looking at academic action plans for each individual student. So again, as you can tell, I'm pretty excited about data. And as you can tell, I'm pretty proud of Manchester Elementary, because we do grow our students, we do believe, and we have a hard-working staff that has a continuous growth plan for our students. We honor every individual child at their own success level and their growth goals, and they're dedicated. This staff is dedicated to make a difference. They are the absolute best staff. Hard-working. They never give up. So the key to success is to focus on the goals, never the obstacles. I would like to really thank this board for giving me the opportunity to stand here and celebrate Manchester Elementary and tell you what we're doing at our school to grow our students. Thank you for your time.
PDCA, Plan Do, Check Act, so...
Was I right?
Problem solving, you're on it.
Yep, we're on it. And the educational gains model works right into that. The multi-tiered level of support, when we say all of those things to parents, it gets to be quite confusing. But if I say educational gains, we get it. And we communicate well with our parents. And that's one thing we're going to strive to do even better at, is talking with our parents on each milestone that we're making.
Mrs. Watkins?
Yes.
One quick question. What... You mentioned that the DLI program...
Yes.
...is math and sciences, is there instructional...
That's what they hear in Spanish.
Okay. And not reading, why is that?
That comes along when they get to the intermediate building. They switch over. But they do do some reading instruction, they will have some experiences there, but the high focus is in math and sciences.
Okay. Thank you.
There's just not enough time in the day.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes. Anything else?
One of the hot points legislatively would be, you know, this, the pass third-grade reading, right? Pass/fail third-grade reading.
Yes.
So I'm going to ask you a pointed question.
That's okay.
Where do we stand on that? If they were to pass that law, right, how many kids would we hold back, or is that an issue with Manchester?
Right now, it's not an issue, but here's where I worry.
Okay.
I feel like we are educational experts, and we, as a school entity, should be making those decisions, not necessarily the state and that bar, because all kids grow at a different level. I had a parent meeting today, and I looked the parent in the eyes, and I hope they're watching today, but I said, "She's got it. She's going to be just okay. She's just not learned boom like that, but she's going to get it, and she's... When it clicks, it's going to be like fire. It's going to be wonderful." And I believe in that. Now, how are we going to score for IREED? Well, you know I'm competitive. We have eighty-three students taking the test this year. It's a bit of a nail-biter, because all students need to pass, and those students count in our scores. Whether they speak zero English, they take the test, special education, growing at a different level, and I feel like we as teachers should be deciding if they're held back or not, and if they get an exemption. But as you all know, with legislation, it's a bit different right now.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, I do. Thank you.
Well, I'm kind of hanging around because I'm next, I think, on the agenda.
I also want to thank you and apologize, because originally this was scheduled for October-ish, November...
Well, it was October, and then it got pushed to December, and then unfortunately, I could not make it, so my apologies to the board for that on December, but I'm happy to be here.
Your scores and data and the evaluation of our academic performance is what we need in this meeting. All the other stuff's great, but that...
Yeah.
You know, we need to know where we're at.
I'm super proud. Are we perfect? Do we have zero red or zero... No. We have work to do, but we know how to do it.
What do you need from us to be more successful?
I would love to keep our class sizes at a manageable level in a primary building. If you have more than twenty-one, it gets a little different with... If I've got twenty-five first graders, it's different than twenty, just to meet their needs, for sure. Curriculum, right now, is kind of expensive, but I'll be talking about how we have a person who won an amazing award and was fully funded in some curriculum for our grade, but that doesn't really help MIS, so I really want to be a speaking point for that as well. Curriculum is expensive, and we don't charge anymore, so that's an issue. So those are things that we need to consider.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, now I get to say something I really am proud of. Mrs. Beth Rosine, if you could step forward, please. I would like to honor Beth Rosine as a Significant Squire Award of Appreciation. I got to put my eyes back on again here. Mrs. Rosine is a graduate of Purdue University. She got her master's from Indiana University Fort Wayne, and she recently received her administrative license from Purdue Fort Wayne. She loves school. Mrs. Rosine has her high ability license, she's kindergarten endorsed, and she's Orton-Gillingham trained. She puts countless hours in to improve our instruction. She has twenty-eight years with Manchester Community Schools. I had the pleasure of meeting her professionally in nineteen ninety-six, when this young, eager, confident young lady walked in, and I was on the interviewing committee when I taught school here. How lucky am I? And I thought, "Gosh, we've got to hire this girl. She's amazing, and she's proven it." When you take a look at this, you say, "What has she taught?" Well, what hasn't she taught? Third grade, first grade, second grade, high ability, reading instruction, and now she has this giant hat on that's taxing, where she is the literacy reading director for our corporation, as well as the preschool director for our corporation for paths to quality. So if you ever wonder what Beth Rosine is doing, you should ask, "What isn't she doing?" She's quite busy. She is instrumental in changing our literacy and English language arts program for our corporation. She was recently awarded the Science of Reading Competitive Grant, and she was fully funded. Well done you. And I cannot wait to celebrate, and without hesitation or reservation, I want to say, "Thank you, Mrs. Rosine, for your Significant Squire Appreciation. Congratulations."
I'm not a huge public speaker, so I won't talk long, but I do appreciate the opportunity to write the grant and the support from our leadership. I've never written a grant before, so Sue and Shelley were very instrumental and pretty much held my hand in that process. It was a large grant. I think we ended up with a hundred and forty-seven thousand, so that is huge when we talk about finances and what we need for our students. Unfortunately, we can only use that K three, so we're hoping maybe for another opportunity for a grant for our four, five, and six, to be able to get them materials as well. But that was a great learning experience, a great opportunity. I appreciate Mr. Hensley and Dr. Stevens and Mrs. Watkins all, in a very short turnaround, wrote letters of support for the grant, so I really appreciate that, because it was, I think, a two- or three-week turnaround time. So we were all pretty excited when we got the news, that we got the grant. And as far as my time here at MCS, I just so appreciate that family feeling that's here, and that's what keeps me here. We have amazing teachers, amazing paraprofessionals that work hard every day with our kids, and when you see that data, that is such a group effort from our whole staff, so I'm really proud of that, proud to work here. So thank you.
Thank you. Very nice.
Can I interrupt just a minute? If any of you are getting texts, the live stream, it says it's streaming, but it's not. I'm getting texts from all kinds of people saying that. I am recording it. As soon as the meeting... I can't fix it right now. I'm recording it as soon as the meeting is over. I will upload it to YouTube so people can watch it. They just can't watch it live right now. So if people are texting you, text that. Technical difficulty, it will be put up after the meeting. So...
Thank you, Randy.
So we've got a few groups of students and their sponsors to recognize, and we're going to start with choir. So Sharon Lehman's here. We've got a few students we'd like to recognize, so Sharon Lehman.
Good evening. It's an honor for me to recognize this year's Indiana All-State Honor Choir members, and I thank the board for the opportunity. And I'd like to invite them up. I will introduce them one at a time, so when I introduce you, go ahead and come on up and stand here. So first, we have Anna Todd. This was Anna's first year in Allstate, and she sang alto, and Anna is a senior at Manchester. Lily Flora, this was also Lily's first year in Allstate. She also sang alto and is also a senior. Milo Hup, this was also Milo's first year in Allstate. Milo sang baritone, even though he may have wanted to sing soprano. No, just kidding. He was a sophomore at Manchester. Kaylin Camp, this was Kaylin's second year as a soprano in Allstate. She is a junior. And then Peyton Hambie, this was Peyton's, also her second year as an alto in Allstate, and she is a senior. Allstate Honor Choir is exactly what it sounds like. Students from all over the state audition for a spot in this competitive Honor Choir. The state is divided into regions, and each region has a quota for the number of students that can be selected. Our area includes all schools in the counties of Adams, Huntington, Casillasco, Wabash, Wells, and Whitley. Not all schools send students to audition, but from this region, our quota is fourteen from that, from all of those counties. That's four sopranos, four altos, three tenors, and three basses. This year, forty-eight students from eight different schools auditioned for those fourteen spots. Manchester claimed five of them. And I'm competitive as well. So... So that made me really happy. I set a goal every year for the students. Last year, my goal was to get four students into All-State, and we did. This year, I wanted to remain at four, but I wanted to get a freshman or a tenor or a baritone in All-State. So Milo helped us achieve that, and we were close to getting a freshman in. And we, not only did we retain our four spots, we added another one. The All-State Concert was held in January during the Indiana Music Educators Conference. It is always just jaw-dropping to hear two hundred and fifty of the best singers from around the state combine their voices in the Embassy Theater. It's incredible. And this year was no exception. Please help me congratulate these singers. That's all we have, thank you.
No sample here?
Yeah, we don't get a few notes.
Well, yeah, go ahead and walk around. You guys can do shishbong. Yeah.
If you guys would hang around, I wouldn't mind you on a recognition gesture.
This is Layman and students. At this time, I'd like to recognize that Dave Zentzmeister, he's gonna tell you a little bit about the yearbook and some of the success they've had.
Good evening, I'm David Zentzmeister, and I'm the yearbook advisor here at Manchester Junior-Senior High School. Each year, we attempt to tell the story of the year. And I think sometimes, people get the misconception that there's some template for that, or there's a format for that that you fill in, and that certainly is not the case. In fact, we prided ourselves on the fact that each year, a group of students come together to create something that's unique, that's a reflection of the year, and that hopefully is a great reflection of our school and community. And along the way, sometimes, we do enter some contests. I also am a little competitive, so that's a little bit fun for us. And this year, we entered two contests currently, which would be the Quill and Scroll, National Honor Society for High School Journalists Competition. In that contest, we were the only school from Indiana to have any students' place. So that was a pretty significant accomplishment for us. And then we also entered the Indiana High School Press Association Rowena Harvey Awards. All of these are based, both of the contests are based on individual efforts. And so we send in PDFs of individual spreads for students to be recognized. And so I'm gonna have the students who receive some of those awards introduce themselves to you tonight. And we're just really excited for them. Our goal is never to win the awards, but it sure is nice to be recognized on the state and national level when students' work merits it. And I appreciate that, and I appreciate all their hard work.
Hello, my name is Carter Wagner. I got third place in sports and infographics at Harvey Award, and third place in graphic design at Quill and Scroll.
Good evening, my name is Braylon Judy, and I earned four awards in Quill and Scroll and the Harvey Awards. I earned third place for an academic spread in both competitions. I also won first place for an album spread with Sammy Lambert. And I also earned second place for our theater spread at Quill and Scroll.
Hello, my name is Sammy Lambert, and I placed first place for the album section at the Harvey Awards.
Hello, my name is Hank Dyson. And in the Quill and Scroll contest, I placed second in clubs and organizations, third in academics, and third place in theme. And at the IHSPA Awards, I placed second in clubs and organizations, second in student life, and first in theme. And my future plans are to attend Ball State University for a degree in communications with a specialization in sports entertainment.
I am the current editor-in-chief of the album and reference sections for the Crest 2024 Yearbook. And my future plans are to attend Indiana University Bloomington and study sports management and marketing with a minor in sports media.
And I am the current academics editor, and my future plans are going, I'm going to go to Ball State for communications and entertainment and sports.
Hello, my name is Carly Blevins, and I'm currently the head photographer for the 2024 Yearbook. And after high school, I plan to major in nursing, either at Indiana University or Indiana Wesleyan University. Hopefully, I decide soon.
I'm the current editor-in-chief of the sports section, and I'm going to be the editor-in-chief of the 2025 Yearbook.
What have you got? People that recognize that they come up here, let's go out there and take a picture. You guys good with that?
What's that?
We've got.
Hey, guys, come on up here.
You want the choir too? Choir, yearbook, it'll be Jag, there's a couple Jag kids out here too. So Jag kids. Okay, we've got one more group, and actually, it's a couple of those kids are gonna maybe circle back around. And this time, no, you're good, you're good. All those kids were all included, or at least a couple of them were. So we're gonna bring up Phil Butler now, our Jag sponsor. And he's gonna talk a little bit about some of their successes that they've had.
Good evening, my name is Phil Butler. I'm the Jag specialist here at Manchester. So I told him if they have to go to stuff, then they're good to go. So I didn't need them to stick around, because you've already seen them and shaken their hands. But we do have a few of them. So the first one I went and recognized, so one aspect of the Jag program that we have, Jag is Jobs for America's graduates. And one aspect of the program is we do have local chapter officers. So we go through kind of electoral process within the class. They come up with various community service activities and things that they can, you know, encourage the rest of our class to participate in, boost those skill sets. This year was the first ever that Jag Indiana has been around, I wanna say for maybe about eighteen years in the state of Indiana. Program nationwide has been around somewhat longer. But this is the first year that Jag Indiana has done state officers. I had two students that were actually up here, Carly Blevins and Braylon Judy, that I wanted to recognize both of them, and I had conversations with each of them. We wound up, Carly had a lot of commitments on her plate, so I respected that. Braylon was willing to take it on. And Braylon got the enjoyment. I'll show you a nice little photo here. He was recognized from our company, Brightpoint, actually, I'll send down, you're welcome to. I have a few extra copies, and I could snag more if you ever need them, let me know. But our, my office, Brightpoint out of Fort Wayne, recognized him as being the first ever elected Jag Indiana state president. So he was elected for the president's spot. He, you know, ran up against a significant number of persons. They did kind of an initial interview process, selected who they wanted to maybe represent each of the roles. And then every program across the state, which we have a little over a hundred and twenty programs currently across the state, everyone got a voice as to, you know, who they wanted to vote for based off their video representation. So it was a true honor to have Braylon, you know, representing Manchester and representing the state of Indiana with that student body. The article in the picture of him is he got to go to Washington DC, where he met with some, you know, state and national representatives, and then got to participate in a few fun activities there as a kind of leadership conference and representative. The other thing I wanted to highlight, and I don't have anything to pass around, but I'll recognize some of the names here. Another aspect of Jag is we have what we call the CDC. It's the Career Development Conference. Every year, the CDC has a, we kind of do our own in-house chapter events. They do regional events, and then it goes to anybody who places first place is the opportunity to compete at the state level. And then, actually, two years ago, they started at a national level. In the time, I was kind of reflecting on it, and in the time I've been here, I did totals. So I think this is my eighth year. We have had ten chapter events that we've placed first, second, or third at regional level. Seven group events, which there are two group events, we placed seven, first, second, or third. Individual events, we've now placed fifty-five of our students. We just had the regional competition within the past couple of weeks, so these totals include this year for regionals. And then state, we're hoping to obviously grow on that number. The competition's in March. To date, we've had twenty-three, first, second, third, and then there's also an honorable mention in there as well. The three that you saw here, so, oh, you're still standing there. So Carly Blevins over here was selected as our region's outstanding senior. So that is the kind of most prestigious that we have of our events. So she was selected and honored from our region. Braylon popping back in there, he actually won first place in regionals last year. Carly did as well in regionals, and then Carly won second place at state in her competition. So she's kind of taken it up a notch. Braylon won first place last year, challenged himself to try a different category this year, where he's placed first place in regionals this year as well. So real excited. The other face that you might have recognized from the earlier group was Peyton Hamby from the choir group. She placed first place in our public speaking competition. So all three of them will be accompanying us to state this spring. In addition to, I wanted to give a few names. So the competitions, the three chapter events are a chapter brochure, a chapter commercial, and the chapter social media campaign. This year, we placed first in the commercial and second in the brochure and chapter, uh, social media campaign. It's the first time we've placed in all three in the same year, and it's the first time we've placed in social media at all since I've been here. In the group events, there's two group events. One is entrepreneurship plan. Josh Steely was our representative. You know, it's a group event, but it can be one to three. Josh Steely represented us. He did last year, where he won first and, at regional and state. He won first again at regionals this year. That is a high mark to do, in my opinion, because I've had several groups who have competed as juniors and seniors, and it's so much tougher to convince those judges a second time around that you're still worthy of being in that spot. So he did an excellent job. The other group that we had consisted of three of our juniors, Abby King, Audrey Sanson, and Avery Thomas. The three of them placed second place in regionals. So again, a high accolade. You know, we have fourteen programs within, or sorry, thirteen programs within our region currently that are competing, so they beat out, you know, obviously, twelve of those other programs, or eleven of the other programs. Into the individual events, we had a career presentation, where a student does exactly as it sounds, a presentation about their career. Melanie Jimenez placed second place in our region for that. Creative Solutions, I kind of describe it as like a MacGyver-type thing, where you're given a random set of materials, and you have to build something that accomplishes a designated task. Aaliyah Nichols placed first place in our region in that. Critical Thinking was Braylon's competition, Braylon Judy. So that is where they're given kind of a workplace scenario. This year, they gave them about a week to kind of analyze, research the scenario, come up with some supportive information. Braylon, I was in that room as a, you know, kind of administrator and watching the judges and observation. And when he got done talking, the judge's first comment was, you've answered every question I've asked somebody today, so I don't know what to really ask you. So it was, there was no doubt in my mind, he was walking away with first in that after they were done deliberating. Olivia Davis won first place in employability skills. This area kind of highlights some of the skills we work on in Jag with cover letter, resume, you know, things like that, those, like it says, employability skills. And then she had to go through a job interview process with that. Financial literacy, they go through a detailed budget. That was Carolyn Hoffmeyer. She placed first place for financial literacy. Peyton Hamby, I mentioned, was first place in public speaking, so that they prepare a three- to five-minute speech. And I also heard from a few judges after the event, some very high praises for her as well this year. Alexis Green, or Ally Green, she placed first place in writing skills. We had some severe technical difficulties the day of the event, and she managed to work through them like a star, so I was super proud of her. And then Amaya Miller's the last one. So we have a cover design, which, this is not her cover design, but to give you an idea of what they're working on, it's kind of the cover for our event brochure. So she placed second place in the region, actually, for the second year, so as a junior and senior for that cover design. So it's just an opportunity to recognize those students and their successes that we have, and hopefully, we can bring home quite a few first, second, maybe even third, if we have to, you know, places at state and keep Manchester on the map for, you know, a front-runner in these competitions, but.
All right, one thing, just wanted to add this, because it was just kind of a late add from over this weekend. We've got two kids that just excelled this year at wrestling. We've got two kids that'll be going to state this weekend. That's Preston Duffy and Rex Moore. So we wish them the best of luck this weekend, as they try to achieve their dream of a state title. So good luck to those guys. Thank you again.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, excellent. Lot, lot of positive things, so financial report.
We really need to change the agenda, so I don't follow, like, to really good news with what I do, so. Whichever one you have up, that's fine. Okay, so again, this goes back to what we started a few months ago with a very simple overview of where we're at. So projected is, again, kind of goes back, this reset in December. So we're projecting in our education fund that our revenue would be nine hundred thousand. We're actually nine-ten, so that's a green dot. Green is good, yellow is neutral, and red is not necessarily something you want to see, but it happens. So total cash, projection, as you can see, variance, we're up one hundred fifty-nine thousand. Monthly revenue, coming across, what we thought, compared to what we got, we're up nine thousand. So for the month expenses, we are actually a hundred fifty thousand dollars less than we expected. Now, before somebody asks a question, it's because we didn't get an insurance bill. So it, you know, it's still good, we'll still be in the positive, but it's not gonna be a hundred fifty thousand dollars one month in the positive, so. Then, if you want to scroll up a little bit, that's just a picture graph of the same information I just went through. Anything on education? Okay, we'll jump into operations. Same information. Again, you're gonna see a lot of negative numbers, and that's because operations, you get two tax draws a year. So after your made tax collection and your December, that's when we get our draws. One of the things I'll talk about to the board in the future is doing what is called an operational borrowing through the Indiana Bond Bank, which would negate the negative numbers. So we'll talk about that at a future date. And we come across, you'll see that total cash, we're anticipated being short two oh six. We're actually short two twelve, so that's a six thousand dollars variance. Again, when you project this stuff out a few months ago, compared to where we're at now, six thousand is not bad at all. Coming across monthly revenue, same thing. We're underestimating the revenue by three thousand. Month expenditures, we're underestimated by two thousand seven hundred. So total monthly balance, we're off six thousand dollars. So when you're looking at a budget of about two and a half million at six thousand dollars, it's not terrible. Again, at the bottom, again, if we do something a little different for next year, this will look vastly different, it'll make a little more sense. But again, you're gonna see a lot of negative numbers until we get to June. And another set of negative numbers after probably August, until we get to December, which is typical. Okay, any questions on the financials?
Well, Mrs. Watkins brought something on curriculum. What's our, do we have any idea what our gap is on?
About a hundred fifty dollars to get.
Okay.
Compared to what our costs have been, compared to what we're getting state revenue.
Okay. And what I'm talking about is textbook fees, right?
Yes.
Charges that we can no longer do, but we have to pay for anyway.
Correct.
Hundred and fiftieth student.
Okay, just wanted to review quickly the fraud loss. If you recall, total loss was one million, one hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred fifty dollars and forty-nine cents. The banks have been able to recover seven hundred seventy-one thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents, which is a huge benefit, honestly. We're still waiting on the insurance claim. They have received all the information they need in order to file. They have received all the information they need in order to file and review the claim. We're now waiting on the adjuster to make a determination if they recover the claim or loss or not. So we don't have any information on that yet. The other thing I'd like to talk about real quick, the furniture for the new facilities has been mostly delivered. We have a few odds and ends that are going to be delivered tomorrow. So cafeteria is pretty much up and running. We have a few high tables we have to order and some chairs in there. The connector is pretty much finished, and the study cars on the main center of the building are up and running as well. We have a few pieces of furniture that are riding tomorrow for in there. So project is almost done. We have, main issue right now is flooring, the poured floor in the cafeteria and the connector. All that is going to be redone this summer. So we're holding reserves on that until it's finished to our satisfaction.
Perfect.
So, any questions?
And just to comment on the comment you made, the vehicles we use to bridge, right, those funds as a common practice for students.
Yes, yes.
It's not anything, we're not doing anything abnormal. Thank you very much. Consent items, claims, minutes, let's see, resignations. Christine, Megan, Jessica, Andrea, and this is stuff pre-reviewed. I don't think, and no grants.
No.
Just be, would somebody like to read the donations this evening? Thank you.
The first donation is five hundred dollars to MCS, for the health and wellness program from an anonymous donor. Five hundred dollars to Manchester Junior Senior High School for the FFA program, anonymous donor. Twelve hundred fifty dollars to the Manchester Junior Senior High School FFA program from Zoetis. Three hundred seventy-five dollars to the Manchester Junior Senior High School APES Physics Trip West from various donors. Five hundred dollars from the Manchester Junior Senior High School to the AP Bio Everglades Trip from various donors. Twenty-three hundred and fifty dollars to Manchester Junior Senior High School, the Theater Department for the Musical Beauty and the Beast from various donors. That total is five thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Thank you once again to our community and our supporters therein.
Big thanks. Thank you, Mr. Brewbaker. And then facility rentals, we've got a few here. So we've got.
Thank you.
Go ahead if you would. Yeah, sure. So we've got Case Knight, MES, graduation reception, six-two, two-twenty-four. Adam Marlett, MJ, Manchester Junior Senior High School, MIS, club volleyball practice. That's, you know, club, and then Old German Baptist Church Youth Group on three-twenty-four, twenty-four. Three different ones. And then, just to, so you've got the, so I just want to make sure, well, not, Tony and I talked about this, but like facility rentals, the, you know, making sure we have the paperwork for these, right? So just, we've got the paperwork. So anyway, I need a motion for, to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Espisette, second, Mr. Brewbaker. All in favor?
Aye.
Seven-zero, Randy. Recommendations for approval, employment. So we've got, oh boy, I'll murder this. Betsky Tiger, John David Longenecker. So rise professional, paraprofessional, and a sped paraprofessional. Annie Baker, part-time cook. John David Longenecker, J.D., volunteer assistant track coach. Austin Hall, volunteer football coach. Karen Jimenez, sped paraprofessional. So let's do employment separately. Motion to approve employment.
So moved.
Mr. Raymer, second. Mr. Brewbaker, all in favor?
Aye.
Seven-zero, Randy. MCS, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school calendar approval.
Randy, do you have a copy of?
I'm trying to get it to come up.
Okay. So this is twenty-four, twenty-five. The first teacher day is, or August fifth and sixth. With the first student day is seventh, last. Are we good? Okay.
Well, it's when they did it.
Yeah, well.
I'm sorry, I wasn't logged, I wasn't logged in too.
Oh, that's, hey, we got a minute.
I can hold it up, what the hell?
All right. Again, the pink upper left is the first two teacher days in August. Students will start at the seventh. This pretty much, Jeff, this pretty much follows past practice, I assume, yeah. So nothing really outstanding on this that's any different. So if you go down to May, two weeks of Christmas, week spring break. May, last student day is the twenty-second. Twenty-third is the last teacher day, and then graduation is the twenty-third.
There's a snow makeup day in March, that's the only thing that's in.
Okay. So any questions?
Well, we do, motion to approve the school calendar.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Penrod, Mr. Fierstos, discussion.
This is second year, no scheduled e-learning?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the first year.
For, this is the first year.
MTA's good with it?
Yeah.
Does NTA like it?
We would rather have started the next week, but every school is grounded, starting August, so we're stuck. So talk to Heartland people, about districts, nobody wants to start on the summer.
Thank you.
So the other, the other feedback I got from this was the sporting schedule, right? And the work, a couple people sent me emails on the sporting schedule and not being able to have workouts and things like that. So I'd imagine we've thought this through, so. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven-zero, Randy.
I will point out, talked to superintendent, and we're going to try to get another couple years of calendars built and adopted, like, soon, so we have two or three years in advance. Instead of doing it like now for this fall.
That'd be great. Just ignore. Yeah, good. Thank you. Yeah, that coordination, we do, you know, that needs to be better. And then, seven-point-three approval for three-on-three basketball tournament?
Have a request from Ali Kaufman to do a three-on-three for boys and girls, grade three and older. Tournament will provide an opportunity for students to be playing, some experience in team sports. Proposed date is Sunday, March seventeenth, starting at one P.M. Will consist of divisions for different age groups. Each team will play two pool games and will participate in a seeded, single-elimination tourney.
Okay. Did you get a facility rental on that yet?
No, because it's internal.
Okay. Motion to approve the three-on-three. Mr. Raymer, second. Mr. Brewbaker, all in favor?
Aye.
Seven-zero, Randy. Where we at? Heartland update?
Okay. The city of Wabash, Mayor Long donated sixty-five thousand dollars as a gift for security, new security cameras and a five-year license. So they have all brand-new security system cameras. They're, they're pretty slick, actually, with, with some abilities on that. One of the discussion, well, another thing we talked about was the roof. They've, they've pinned it down to needing a roof. And then we'll take the electrical and the HVAC at another time, try to figure out how to do that. But we're starting with, I believe, the roof, and they want to get the roof done this summer. It would be the optimal time to do it. The proposed cost from Garmin Miller without getting quote, without getting quotes through, obviously, the, the project companies is eight ninety-eight and eight hundred dollars, eight hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. So what we're trying to come up with now, and I've been in talk with, I've talked with Tony quite a bit as well, is trying to figure out how we can get that accomplished. Our, our portion is obviously, it's a hundred and some thousand. I think we talked about that before. I have that on here somewhere. Ah, here it is.
Basically a fifth, so.
Huh?
Basically a fifth of the cost.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, it's actually, here we go, a hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred, four hundred dollars. So that's our, would be our portion based upon AV. So there's several ways that they've talked about it. They've talked about, well, I mentioned before, there's just a lot of different options to look at. So we're in that process right now, and I've, like I said, I've been in close contact with Tony, which is also in close contact with Jeff, so, yeah. So we're, we're moving forward with that, hopefully, to get it done this summer. That would be great. And the last thing is, it was brought up on a discussion again, that, the discussion of whether or not superintendents should run the board for Heartland. It was brought up by the, the Northfield, or the MSD rep. And so it was brought up because they were not, they thought that the building projects could go faster with the superintendents running the board. And I tend to think about being able to communicate with the superintendent, and it gives a great, great opportunity to work more closely with the board as a representative and also with the superintendent. So that's still just a discussion item. Hopefully, it doesn't go anywhere, but at the same time.
Well, whether the superintendents attend the board meetings with the.
I want them to attend the board meetings. That'd be great.
My view take on it, you know, Heartland's been around how long? Right, since sixty-some. Somebody put some forethought in the longevity of that institution, and I'd quit, you know, I'd say to all of us, we need to think hard before we, we make changes to the way that institution's ran now. What really needs to happen is, we need to, the schools need to come together and form a vehicle, right, that we actually start to save or plan money to, to repair Heartland and to grow Heartland. That's what's missing in this. It's not who's.
They have upped the, upped the contribution a little bit, but not near enough for building issues. So that's, that's definitely on.
You've got a creative director that found money in places that maybe other people can't find. I'll just say that, right? And so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on Heartland?
Nope, I'm good.
Thank you. Legislative update?
House is in session. Obviously, just last Friday, any bills that have passed out of the Senate and the House now flip, flip chambers, and so they're reviewing each other's bills. Compared to last year, it's a lot more simplified down. Last year, it seemed like there were some thousand education bills. It was crazy. So it, a little simpler. So I pulled out a few. Some were mentioned tonight. Senate Bill One talks about multiple laws geared toward improving reading efficiency or proficiency, primarily before the third grade. Senate Bill Six, similar reading proficiency measures, but it's more fourth through eighth grade. I'm trying to catch some that may have got through that are still not catching on as quickly. Senate Bill Thirty, kind of interesting on the school bus stop arms, a safety issue. They're looking at having an infraction on the registered, vehicle-registered person on that vehicle, even though they had a family member driving it or something. I don't know if that's a reason, because they're having a hard time tracking who's driving what, but they said they'll go after the registered driver of the vehicle. And then if they cooperate to help find who was driving the vehicle, then they can be released as a defense against them. So it obviously is, you know, I think that law's great. Some people are still slipping through and still not abiding by that, so they upped the measures on that. Senate Bill Fifty, which allows superintendents and/or principals to employ a school chaplain to provide only secular support unless parental permission is given to provide non-secular support. So I think that's kind of a fill gap for the lack of counselors out there. So if that does pass, there's an opportunity for some school chaplains if they so choose. Senate Bill One-eighty-five requires schools, corporations to adopt and implement a wireless communication policy that governs student use. Obviously, that's a hot topic, so I look for that one to probably stick moving forward, if I had to guess. And then the last one I pulled out, Senate Bill Two-eighty-seven, requiring cursive writing in the curriculum and internet safety instruction. So that one came up last year, and it's back again, so we'll see if that one sticks or not. So other than that, I'll update you. It seemed like the next month I should have more, what the other chambers kept or, and gotten rid of, so. That's all I've got, Mike.
Yeah, thank you. So I, so Mr. Conia and I from region had a meeting today on, on some of the legislation. I want to, what they shot me, I want to shoot to all you guys and kind of get your input on there. If you'd read through it and do, matter of fact, I think the hearing's tomorrow, though. But a lot of interesting things on funding, right? So we talked a lot about finance tonight, you know. I guess we'll see what happens, you know? So superintendent comments?
Mr. Castle was, previously had a conflict for this evening. He's at the National Convention of Superintendents, so that's why I'm sitting here.
Thank you.
That's it.
And thank you for coming tonight. School board comments?
I just want to thank all the presenters and all the achievements, numerous, and this is just what came today. There's more happening out there. Looking in the paper, the athletes, the choir, the Science Olympiad, it's just on and on and on. A lot of activities, good stuff going on. So thank you to all the volunteers that are helping lead the students and the students involved in those.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Mrs. Watkins, for your presentation tonight.
Yeah, and the last meeting, the candy bars from your students, thank you. We kind of got off track and, you know, took that. I think, so we'll kind of end with this, there, you know, we've got a short legislating session. I think that's why maybe the, the number's down. But I mean, still, there's some critical legislation. So I would just say this to the public and everybody that works. So, I would just say this to the public and everybody that works at the school, right, and to the board, you know, stay on top of this stuff, talk to, you know, we got Andy Zay, you know, Mr. Snow, Rudy Yakons, our U.S. Congressman. Talk to these people because, you know, I do think people have good intent in the legislation, you know, and, and people in education are the experts, but we got to figure out how to sort of work together on this legislation. And, and my prayer is that, you know, the schools don't be, you know, it almost seems to me, I've been on this board seven years, it almost seems like the schools are the political battleground anymore, you know? And that's not right. I don't, you know, I don't care who you are. It's, I don't think that's fair, you know, and it, and I wonder why people don't march on other places and, you know, different things like that or why, you know, the mask thing, you know, I'm looking at that, we're trying to force masks on kids where they don't know who each other is, but yet nowhere in the community are people wearing masks, you know, just to go back a little bit. So, you know, stay vigilant for education. But I, you know, I do feel, I do think sometimes, you know, the world's changing in education. You've got charter schools, job training, right? That's going to open up a lot of resources to other people doing work-based learning. So, like if we, if, if we're in publication and you think we can sit here, right, and continue to do what we do and be successful, you know, what you're talking about using data to do problem-solving, to find different ways to educate these kids, crunch our lead times, you know, build quality in, that's where we got to go. So, motion to adjourn. Mr. Espisette, second. Mr. Brubaker, all in favor? Aye, seven-zero. Thank you.